Of our board members are here besides myself, it's Laura Bozey, Heath Salat and John Martin. There are two projects on the agenda tonight, one of them we'll deal with very quickly and that's Rock Street. The applicant has asked. Luke, are you here representing that project?
Yes, Eric, I am. I just wanted to to appear briefly if the board had any questions, I guess.
Eric, grabbing some trouble. You're coming in and out.
Oh, we lost.
Okay. Well, we're happy to adjourn. No problem at all. I don't have any comments or questions to any of the other board members. Anything? All right.
Just so the board members know that Luke's client's appearing before the HDRB right now. So I think it's best to just kind of table things to see how the HDRB goes. And he may or may not need relief from the zoning board. So there's no sense you guys wrapping your hands around this because it may be moot. But if it's not, you know, then you'll be ready.
I'll be back, yeah. So thank you very much, Jack. I appreciate your time.
You're welcome. So the German is granted and we'll move on to the next, the next item, which is continuing the hearing on 33 Market Street. Question of a six interpretation of code as it applies to a six foot fence at this location. Today, we received new correspondence from Mr. Morando and presenting additional information. Did the other board members see that? Did you receive that in your email today?
Yes.
I received it. I haven't had the chance to read it.
Okay.
Like us.
Mr. Morando, would you like to just summarize the the new, the new factors that you brought up?
Sure, yeah, and in case it's in your inbox or somebody didn't see it, we sent it yesterday early afternoon, I believe. So January 6th. Yeah, I mean, we could certainly do that. Actually, if it's okay with the board. Last, last month, we gave a presentation on the proposal, so we certainly won't do that again. Other than to just orient you to the project by showing you a plan. Which, which we can have Paul bring up in a second. But one of the things, you know, that we talked about a lot last week, last month was the interpretation. And I just wanted to make sure tonight we, we had a little focus on the area variance, which is before you pursue into the code enforcement officers September decision. So if Paul could bring that up, if the chairman would like me to pause, if there's anything you'd like to discuss first, or if we should just go in and give a quick summary on the area variance.
It's fine with me if you just proceed.
Okay. Paul, do you want to, you want to pull up that, that Reed Hildebrand image that we included in yesterday's submission?
Sure, I need to be enabled to. Share first.
Is that Mike? Does Michael have to grant that permission?
Yes.
I just granted it because Paul, how could I refuse you?
Oh, thank you very much. I appreciate your generosity. One second here, let me find the right.
So while Paul brings that up, as the board knows, you know, the standard for an area variance involves a balancing test. And generally speaking, summary fashion, the, the balancing test involves the benefit of the applicant versus any detriment to the neighborhood. We think it's pretty evident with this application that it meets this standard, but, but we certainly want to give the board a chance to walk through that. In summary, you can see with, with what Paul's showing us here. And Paul, if you want to switch over to the Reed Hildebrand.
My computer is very slow tonight.
Well, we can use this anyway. So just, just to recall where we are on this property. The, the fence is located, there we go. So the fence is, so, so where Paul's arrow is right about now is where Market Street is. And the fence is proposed for a 50 foot stretch behind the two story existing house. Then the fence is about 70 feet back from Market Street. You can see how it's been aligned. It's intended to align basically, and when I say align, I mean run next to a limited area along an otherwise very large property boundary. And that's that portion starts over by the edge of the, of the existing house along an open deck. And basically follows along where the parking lot area is immediately to the north. It's not acclimated that way on the screen, but that's to the north. The, the fence there essentially just follows that and then stops. It's about 8% of the overall property line. So the, the intention is clear here with this fence, just to sort of provide this, you know, reasonable screening that from a, from direct views from a open living space on the porch and the bedroom and living area inside the guest house, which is only five feet from the, from the parking area. The, Richard and Natasha, the applicants, they limited this intentionally. And they're not intending to fully enclose that property line or, or, or close it off to others or air and light. It's really to address and something Paul walked through last month. The change in topography, both as it moves towards the river, both as it moves north on the property. And this unique situation, which has the, this existing historic footprint and a porch very close to a parking area. So I just wanted to orient the board and make sure we're all talking about the same thing on this, on this property. In terms of what we submitted yesterday, after the last meeting, we, we went back and Paul did a great job. He looked through, we had done some preliminary assessment, but Paul really did a great job looking into very detailed information. Went through the area just to confirm where six foot fences existed in the B1 district between properties today. And there are many, and we documented that in there. And further, we went back and we communicated with the village in terms of looking at old records to see where these existed. And when they, when they came into fruition, and we provided some, some documents regarding existing fences and how they got there. But at the end of the day, the information that we added, we think really shows that this fence is incredibly indistinguishable in the area. It's incredibly screened, setback, it's limited in scope. And it, and it's generally consistent with the existing development in the area. That's ultimately what we discussed in our yesterday's submission. We do touch on some things regarding the interpretation and clarifications on some things that came up during the extensive discussion last month. But I, you know, short of the board wanting me to get into that right now, I, I was just going to move forward and talk through the area variance further with you. So in that point.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
No, no. So I was just going to sort of hand it off at that point and see if the board had questions or wanted to discuss it further.
Which, which part? The area variance itself?
Correct.
Does, so that is that we're not going to be dealing with the code interpretation at the moment? We're just dealing with the variance request.
Yeah, we will. After we close the hearing, we will, then the board will discuss first the interpretation and then make a decision on the interpretation and then discuss the variance if necessary. But for now, if you have any questions to the applicant regarding the, the variance portion, now's the time to ask them.
If I could, so along the line of the fence, are there any trees nearby that designated fence along the stretch of what you said, I believe 70 feet?
It's the, so when you, and Paul, please jump in at this point. But when you start at Market Street, excuse me, it's about 70 feet from Market Street to the start of the fence. And then from there, the fence is about 50 feet past that. So Paul, you're, you know, obviously more familiar with the, with the dirt over there in the ground. Do you recall exactly where any trees may be?
Well, on, on this Reed Hildebrand image, they, they do show a, a large Norway maple that's in, that's there. There are the, the majority of the trees actually from that, the photograph at the beginning of the, of the exhibit, I think it's Exhibit A. Those, those trees are really to the north of, of the Crups Living quarters here. So it's in the area between, my pointer's not working right. There we go. In this area here is where the majority of the trees are. So that's why you won't, you aren't able to see the fence, the section of fence that we're building from Market Street itself. But yes, the answer to your question is that, John, there are trees, you can see them on here. I mean, they're not, it's not like they surveyed every single tree. But generally speaking, there are trees, you know, in this area and also in this area just outside of the parking.
Okay, thanks. The reason why I'm asking is that one of the concerns I have, and you know, and again, we'll, we'll get more into the other stuff about interpretation of the code, but I'm wondering whether or not vegetation can grow. And we, we discussed that it was basically a rock shelf there. And I was wondering if in fact there were trees that were growing in the vicinity where you propose your, the fence to run.
Yeah, I'm glad, I'm glad you asked that actually, because that, I was going to interrupt. The, the, the section, when we're talking about the trees, yeah, we're talking about the trees between market and the fence, which really provides great screening. But as you get further down, there is that rock ledge and, and topography, which essentially makes it difficult for things to grow there. We, we'd submitted some information in our October package that, that sort of explained that further. But yes, you're right on it, John, that there is difficulty there growing anything because of that rock ledge.
So there, there are no trees really, if, if I'm asking you, like, say, within 10 feet to your knowledge of the proposed fence on the southern side of the, the proposed fence, directly to the south, anywhere within 10 feet of that. You really have no vegetation to your understanding.
There are, I mean, John, you know, you know how trees grow, particularly in Putnam County. They find a crevice in a rock and they're, they're predominantly volunteer. I mean, that's how all of these Norway maples grew up in Cold Spring. So there are trees there, but you can't plant anything intentionally. You can't like go there and, and put something where you want it to be. Because you, you, the ledge is there. So it really comes down to, you know, a maple seed getting caught between two rocks and growing over time and being able to do it, but you can't intentionally plant something there. Because it's, it's just too much rock ledge.
Okay, just wanted to get that on the record. That's all. Thanks.
Just a, the point of clarification is, is kind of a follow up to John's question. The, as I look at this design and you're pointing out that Norway maple just, I guess, west of the porch. Is there any, when I look further west from the fence, is there a continuum of the fence that then becomes tree line when I see those other trees that are acting as the, the extension of the fence?
I'm not sure.
Does that question make sense?
Can you see where my pointer is?
Exact, yes.
That's the end of the fence.
I guess what I'm, what I'm asking according to this design is, are those two additional circular reference points that look like the other Norway maple? Are those, that is a tree line?
Well, there are trees there. It's not, it's not like a tree line per se. I mean, you know, this is a little, yeah. I, I mean, you can see.
It's not an intentional tree line. It's, it's just indicating there, there are some trees. Okay.
Yeah, and like I say, I don't think that, that, that they went and they surveyed every tree location and, and it's all exact.
Okay. And then the only other point of clarification, when referencing that, that the fence will only extend along 8% of the, the otherwise large property line, 8% of the property line in total, is that accurate?
Yeah, the entire, the, the total of.
The entirety of it. Okay.
Of the northern property line, yep.
Of just the northern property line?
Just the northern property line, correct.
Okay.
I think you wrote that in the letter.
Correct, yep.
Okay.
So I know that we, we haven't met before, but he, this is that, that image we were, we were talking about. So this is that almost 70 feet from Market Street, right? To the beginning of that fence, and then that's a 50 foot fence. So you can see that these, these two structures are, they're referenced on here. That's what that's pointing to. And you have that as well in the, in the original.
Yes, that makes sense. Thank you. I'm, I'm familiar with it.
Paul, could you scroll down so we could see more of the house here on this drawing? Yeah, that's, I, I just want to point out to the other board members, highlight something that for me argues in favor of the variance. This guest house, notice how it's placed practically on the property line itself. There's almost no setback. And therefore, there is a, a resulting diminishment of quality of life for the owners on both sides of the property line. This is the kind of thing that the current zoning code is meant to prevent, but we have it here in a historical form. So the, the fence is in essence serving to compensate for this unfortunate placement and so, and restores a certain degree of privacy that is, that's unavoidably lost by the placement of the building.
Makes sense. Thank you, Eric.
And you know, I, I think this is tied into, in part, the variance. I read in the letter that it references to a certain coat of paint to be on the fence to make it non, you know, obtrusive. I, I forget what the color might be. What are they proposing? Or is that to be determined by the HDRB?
HDRB has no, no say in color in, in the village of Cold Spring, although they do in other municipalities. But the, the fence, I don't remember the name of it, but it's, it's a dark gray.
It's, yeah, it's, it's generally a natural tone. And, and just to point out, Paul, you jumped over this. The HDRB did review it and approve the fence as it is. And the color was part of the discussion, but I think Paul's point is that's not necessarily their jurisdiction. But yeah, it's a, it's a natural tone, Paul. I think is that the best way to explain it in that it's very close to the color of, I mean, in my own very, yeah, exactly, tree bark is what I was going to say.
Well, the, yeah, because the only reason why I ask is that I didn't think you did mention a color, although you mentioned in that letter that it was a non-obtrusive color or tone. That's, that's why I'm asking. A tone on the, on the, on the color itself, so such that the fence doesn't stick out. I know it's 70 feet off of market, but.
Correct. No, I, I think that's absolutely accurate. That the, 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 the tone of the proposed fence is unobtrusive. It is a darker brown. I don't have a, a technical color. I leave that to Paul. But, but yes, I agree.
I was just responding to the letter. I was just curious as to what the tone was. That's all. Thank you.
Can you remind us, just going back to the 8%, what are, what's the length of the northern property line and what's the length of the fence?
Paul, correct me if I'm wrong about it. The fence is about, is 50 feet and the northern property line is 678 maybe, 680?
Your memory is better than mine.
It's, yeah, it's between 670 and 680 is what my memory serves me, but.
Is that portion jet out into the water, the property line?
Yes, it does.
Of course, yes.
Okay, thanks. That makes sense. It's just very notable for the village to have a 50 foot long fence and have that only be 8%. So just kind of, kind of have that make sense to me.
I don't have any further questions, Eric.
Okay, anyone else have anything more to say regarding the area variance request?
About the area variance?
Yeah. Right. Did you, Mr. Morando, want to say anything about the, that your new information on regarding the interpretation of the code?
Candidly, I, I'd like to, to proceed with the variance. I know we have to decide the interpretation first. The, the information we provided on the interpretation was really kind of responsive to the ongoing discussion we had last meeting. Just to provide some clarification to some points. We also did some of that, that research, looking back in village records as to how it's been dealt with in the past. We asked for information regarding many properties in the B1 district. And as part of that, that effort, we, we, we learned that no, no variance has been required for a six foot fence in the B1 district in the past. And there were, at least just from the records we looked at, there were, there were some building permits and COs issued for six foot fences in the B1 district along property boundaries between B1 lots. So I'm not here to harp on that, but we did want to, we did do the work and we did clarify it. So I wanted to at least provide it to the board.
Okay. I did have a question about one of your, from the footnotes in your, in your new correspondence. Let's see here. On page three of your new file, footnote number three. It reads, "The building department and ZBA also approved a six foot boundary fence in 2018 between 126 and 138 Main Street." So what did this, do you know, I mean, I, I didn't have time to look this up after receiving the file. So do you happen to know offhand what is the ZBA did in this decision?
Paul, feel free to jump in on this too. This was a, it's the fence along Main Street between those, I think you all know Main Street better than I do. So you, you know where I'm talking about.
The yarn shop. It's next to the yarn shop.
Right. So it's the portion of that fence we're talking about is the portion where it's, it was allowed to be six feet in. And it wasn't a, it wasn't a, I don't know that there's a formal written decision by the ZBA, but, but my understanding of the situation was there's a six foot portion of that fence that wraps around the property, and I don't have a map in front of me to show you. But there's a portion of that fence that's six feet between those two parcels and they're both, they're both the same use and they're both in the B1 district. So it, I was highlighting it there for the purpose of, there was a section in the code that came up previously that I brought up and as, as well, we had a long conversation about. That said, in the B1 zone, you have to have, there's a screening required of five feet or, or more in, in a, I apologize, I don't have this section for me, but effectively in a non-residential zone that borders a residential zone. Well, that was a situation that, that we were aware of where it actually doesn't border a residential zone or residential property necessarily, and it was allowed. That was the point of that footnote.
Okay, thank you.
Eric, I've, in my experience, I've recollected that we've had applications by private individuals who border up against business districts. You know, the business district zone that have made applications for fences in excess of four feet. And we looked at those issues and decided on the merits, you know, whether or not to grant it. And typically went along nuisance of, you know, criteria. So it's not like you could just go build the fence to my understanding. You know, six feet, that is.
Exactly, yeah, yeah. Some of those applications have happened since I've been on the board, so I certainly know about them. So I, I guess the next step would be to close the public hearing. If there are no members of the public here, and if nobody else has anything more to say, we can close the hearing and proceed to make a decision on the, on the application. Does, would somebody like to make a motion that we close the hearing?
I'll make that motion. John?
I'll second it.
Paul in favor?
Hi.
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 Right. Now, let's start by talking about the, the interpretation we've been asked to make. And let, let me just remind board members that what we decide on this issue, it will be binding on this, on the ZBA, unlike our decisions on variances, which are limited to the, the specific case. This will be, this will be a binding decision that will apply to all similar cases in the future. I, I wanted also to bring up a new, a new, a new issue that, that occurred to me that no one has brought up before regarding reading the code in, in this, in this connection. The applicant has argued that 134.17 ought not to apply to the B1 district because that section is headed residence, residence districts. But if, if, if we follow the applicant in that reading, I, I, I think that, that reading is actually underpins the applicant's own case. Because B1 districts have a side yard requirement, just as every other district does. Lots in B1 are required to have side yards which are kept open and unobstructed. And the only reason that fences can be built in any lot, such as an R1 lot, is because there's an exception granted to this side yard requirement, and that exception is in 13417. So if the applicant, if the applicant argues that 13417 does not apply to B1, then there is no longer an exception that permits any fence of any height in B1 as of right. So I think that's a self-defeating, in addition to the logical problems we talked about at the last meeting, I think it's a self-defeating argument which further points to the, the unreasonableness of interpreting the code in that way. Now, do board members have anything new that they like to say about or discuss about the, the interpretation?
Well, I agree with what you say, Eric. It's certainly another way of looking at it in part on the inverse. But the fact that they actually refer that section 1349 on business districts refers to both 13417 and 13418. And I understand the applicant's argument that because 134-17 references to resident districts and it is defined as resident districts up in front of the zoning code as opposed to business districts and, and the like. I still don't think there would have been a reference, and I don't think there's any ambiguity. And I think more so for the, you know, additional reason as you point out, you know, on the logic. And I think it's pretty clear. There would, that would mean, there would be no reason to reference to 134-17 at all. If be, if 134-9, you know, understood that perhaps only B1 issues would apply. I, I, I don't think it would even refer to resident districts. So I, I think it does it for a reason and mostly because that is the one section that, you know, the four foot fence is mentioned. And, and, and I, I think as you had discussed before, I think just in, you know, in general application. And what the, when you look at the entire code, what the intent I would take. And first of all, these are residential properties. So there's an understanding and, 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 and there's an understanding that zoning somehow doesn't all fall into place the way we pointed out, but zones are created. But they don't necessarily have to be business oriented. They can be residents. And, and everybody knows this, and you can opt to build your house in a business district, knowing that they could put a a carding company right next to you. So you, you take that risk, but the point is, is that there are such things as mixed use. And I think the code recognizes that. And so it just doesn't, and, and there's also that general understanding about fencing, you know, where the, the village has expressed a position that they just don't want to see these high fences around. But of course, we all understand that where you, you have nuisance type created situations where in fact there are businesses up against residences and people just make those options to live there. Nuisance qualities should be somewhat sheltered out, which again, there's a distinguishing situation between nuisance and business to residents and residence to residence, I think also on a privacy issue. Because that issue, I think, is common to virtually most properties. In, in some cases, more than others, where houses right, right on, are right on top of each other. So again, we look at everything in, in general, but we also have to look at the code as a whole and what is the intent? So again, we look at everything in, in general, but we also have to look at the code as a whole and what is the intent of it. And that is why there are the five statutory criteria where, where we have to weigh everything. There's, there's a lot brought in. All right. I've said enough. And that's my feeling.
Um, could we just talk for a minute about kind of procedurally, what, what's the decision that we need to make for this interpretation? And what's involved in the justification for that, for that decision? I, I'm just wondering how much we need to, what kind of evidence we need to build on either side in order to, to make our, to make our determination here.
Right. So you just merely have to determine that the building inspector's determination that requires the applicant to obtain a variance for fence height in the B1 zone is rational, reasonable. You know, that's really it. You know, does it kind of make sense? You know, is, is there some type of basis or justification for it?
Right. But by the language in the code.
Right. Yeah. You know, is the interpretation reasonable?
And I think it behooves us to keep in mind that our, our interpretation should be as narrow as possible. There's no call for us to make any broader, any broader readings. So we're simply quite, we're simply deciding whether this, this application and any future application for a fence in the B1 over four feet requires a referral for a variance.
I just have one question and, and you know, correct me if, if the question shouldn't apply to this conversation. Cause I know it's outside of the conversation at this point, but I noticed that the Board of Trustees meeting this evening at 6:30 had a a review of fences regarding new chapter. I wasn't able to, to attend. Is there any concern that there's anything relevant in that conversation that would apply to this one?
Well, in my understanding, they are working on the revision of the zoning code, which they've been doing for years. And it's an, it's an ongoing project.
Okay.
And it's not happening anytime soon.
Yeah. Someday, there will be a new zoning code and it will have new rules on fences.
They appreciate that clarification. It, it sets my mind a little bit more at ease if we're making a decision tonight.
Right. We're stuck with the code the way it is currently, and there's no guarantee that it will be changed. It could be just the same.
Okay.
So you can't, we can't go by speculation. And just like Eric said, you know, we do this narrowly and we just go by the language and how we interpret that language. Is how we're cross-referencing these provisions, these, you know, specific provisions. And that's it.
Okay. So you guys ready to vote on the interpretation?
Yeah, I will. I'll propose a motion and the motion is that the board supports the building inspector's referral and finds that it is reasonable and conforms to the plain language of the code. For, because of the cross-reference in 134 dash nine, which sends us to 134 17. The, the board holds that the cross-reference should be taken on its face in the absence of any reason to believe otherwise. It's, and the cross-reference is telling us to apply everything, to take the applicable requirements of 134 17. To disregard that cross-reference, to say that it, it's meaningless, creates at least four different kinds of absurdity. And it, for example, it would mean that the cross-reference itself is void and, and null. And secondly, it would mean that there is no exception granting fences as of right at all in B1 without 134 17. And number three, another absurdity is that if we exclude 134 17 from B1, all the other valuable requirements in 17 would, would then not apply. Things like no obstructions on corners, things like the placement of accessory buildings. Those are all in dash 17 and they need to, and they make sense. They apply to B1 and it's, and it's rational for them to be read as applying to B1. So on the, on that basis, the board supports the building inspector's referral. So if, would anyone like to second the motion?
I'll second that, as stated, unless anybody wants to add additional language to what Eric said.
No, the, the motion is subject to amendment.
I, I, I agree with your rationale. Sorry, Laura. Go ahead.
No, just, I don't know if we can ask this, but curious from John first, if that is a sort of sufficient, but and not, and, but also not too much detail, is that, is that kind of the appropriate amount of justification that we need for, for determination?
Right. Well, I think, I think the chairman was kind of laying, setting forth, setting forth the justification to make sure the now, you know, to kind of narrow the scope.
Yeah.
But so, I mean, I think it's fine, but in essence, you know, the, the motion is, is, is really, you know, is really to whether to support the, or whether to uphold the building inspector's determination from September, which required a, an area variance for an installation of a fence pursuant to 134 17 and the fence height requirements in the B1 zone.
Yeah. John, could I ask you, does it help for future boards to have any kind of the understanding that Eric expressed? So they could also figure out why.
I think Eric, you know, he laid it out nicely and it'll be in the minutes.
Okay.
All right. So the motion has been seconded. All in favor, say hi.
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 All right. The motion passes unanimously. John, do we draft a, then do we draft a memo to memorialize this? Decision?
Uh, let's see. Well, normally, you guys normally don't draft decisions, correct?
We do on variances.
About what? Go ahead, Eric.
On variances?
Yeah.
Okay. So if you normally draft something, then, then you can memorialize something after the fact. And I can, you know, review the minutes and based upon your discussion and Eric's summary, for the most part, I, I can draft a little paragraph and, and you can have a written resolution for future boards.
Okay. So let's talk now about the variance request. I, I'd just like to start by offering a thought. I've been on the board for two years and have sat in on several applications regarding fences. And I've been struck by the way in which of fence variances are different from other kinds of variances. They really are unique. With other, with virtually all other types of non-conforming features, the, there's a benefit to the applicant and a potential harm to the public, to the community. And so the board's job is to weigh the benefit against the potential detriment. Fences are different in that the good ones benefit both sides. The good ones bring benefits both to the neighbor, to the applicant and to the neighbors and the public. And you can't say that really about any other kind of non-conforming feature. So I think it's, it's, it's appropriate and fair-minded for the board to approach fence requests with more flexibility than it does other kinds of requests. We saw this in the letter from Thomas Patachak, the neighbor of 33 Market Street, who endorses, he, he states that the fence would improve his quality of life. It will benefit him. And that is, rarely would you hear that about any other, any other neighbor at a, at a hearing like this. So aside from that, the board member, do board members have anything they'd like to say regarding the, the request, the variance request?
Well, maybe on that point, I'll say that I, I agree that, that fences can often benefit both property owners on both sides. But sometimes then abstract views or have other negative impacts more broadly on the neighborhood or but that, that doesn't, in this particular case, that doesn't seem to, to be taking place because it's so far back from the street and it, and it's, it's quite hidden. So it doesn't have that kind of broader potential impact that I think is important for us to consider for fences.
I agree in part with what Laura says in regards to the fact that the fence proposed is set far back 70 feet off of the market street, street line. You know, but as far as for privacy purposes, one thing about variances, they run with the land. And so property owners change. And I understand the way this piece, these two pieces of property conjoin each other. And what Eric said earlier about the guest house having been constructed virtually on the property line. We have certain issues that can differentiate maybe this situation from others. And the thing that to me is actually the most compelling statement in favor of a potential fence higher than four feet is that you may, you cannot plant, plantings there to substitute for screening. And that to me is, because the privacy issue, again, people, it, it always will differ. And, you know, but once you grant a variance, it's always there, you know, on down the line. And it's hard to differentiate between properties, different properties where, you know, who knows what the neighbor from hell who moves in or whatever. So I, I find that hard to differentiate on the privacy issue, you know, going forward with other fence applications, you know, as far as even if this is in a business district, there's two residences. But so many issues that Eric raised, Laura raised, I think for the fact that the, the guest house is virtually on the property line, the fence is set so far back. That there can be no plantings there. And the fact that the fence will be according to the letter of the applicant of a tone that's not obtrusive. And the fact that it's also vented for air pursuant to the HDRB requirements. I mean, some of these are probably the only things that, you know, and, and the cumulative effect that would make me think higher than a four-foot fence between the residences. Even if in a B1 district, but that's my opinion.
Another unique factor along the lines you were saying that was brought up before is the unusually uneven topography in this location. The, the rock outcroppings are quite steep. And a four-foot fence would, judging from the pictures, a four-foot fence would tend to be swallowed up and have, not have the desired effect and more height is required because of the, the landscape.
I, I think that, you know, a lot of these variables would have to be put into the resolution to, to make it clear so that we can easily distinguish this from other cases that come up. In, in case we have more of a, of, of less of a feeling that it should be allowed beyond four feet, but that's, that's all I'm going to say.
I appreciate the dialogue and particularly the, the headline of the, of what sounds like a three, kind of a three-pronged, the thoughtfulness in, you know, for the applicant, the neighbor and the public being the community. You know, what, what my experience has been, in short experience with this particular conversation is, is that there's thoughtfulness in the natural aesthetic. I'm also, you know, appreciative of John's point of being reminded that should the owner change at some point, there may not be that same goodwill for a community in the discussion. So I appreciate the fact that there is careful, precise, thoughtful language going into the decision to support something like this so that it doesn't put the community in a situation in the future that there wouldn't be such robust discussion around it. Something just top of mind for me when thinking about the topography was, and I don't think this was careful not to bring this up in the wrong moment with application, but I'm picturing with the topography, does so many feet of fence on one owner's property? If it happened to cross the, the property line, what does that same footage equate to? And would it, in, in variance and change of, of topography end up being taller than that, the, the current property owner's height alone? You know, and, and you know, that, I don't think that's, I think that's why the flexibility that's, that the, the the group has mentioned in, in looking at this is, is helpful personally for me when, when considering.
Well, that's a good point that I think the guest house is at a higher level than the, the neighboring house. By several feet, I mean, it's, it's down a little bit lower as, so the fence might to that property seem higher. But in this case, the neighbor is not objecting. Maybe because it's not a stockade fence per se, maybe because it's going to let air through. So. And it's, it's on a limited portion of the northern boundary line. It's not, I, I don't think it's necessarily covering. I mean, obviously, as we know, the house borders the first 70 feet, the guest house. And then there's the fence, but I don't know how much further west the two adjoining properties have any open space between each other. But I mean, as you just said, all, all these variables have to be taken into consideration and actually written down for our own purposes going forward. If other people relate, just as we've heard tonight, well, this has happened before. And, you know, why not now? Because it's all been happening in prior circumstances. You know, whether people just put in six-foot fences. I don't think, obviously there was never an interpretation before because we're doing it for the first time, right? And so the board is trying to be more mindful of what's going on and trying to do it the right way and trying to work with the code. So I think what we're doing here now is going to help this board going forward to be able to use distinguishing factors. And, and then see how we weigh things. That's all I'm saying.
Laura, you have anything to add?
Um, no, I, well, his point just got me thinking about, you know, it's eight percent of the applicant's property line. It's not eight percent of the neighbor's property line. So I think that, that makes, I don't know what it is, but you know, their property isn't as long as, as the applicants. So I, I think for me, that, that, that point just has a little bit less impact. I think there are other ones that, that still are in favor of the applicant, but it's a good reminder to think about it from, from the neighbor's side too.
That, that's a good point, Laura. I don't think we should really reference per se to the eight percent because it's got a false narrative with regards to the northerly property. Because a, a, a lot of that, that northerly property line, you know, stretches out into the Hudson.
Yeah.
So I think that as a board, we shouldn't really sit with that eight percent. I don't know. We could use it to our advantage, but by referencing to it. If we actually grant something higher, but anyways, I, I agree with your point, Laura.
All right. Let's walk through the five factors and start with the question of whether, whether the benefit can be achieved by any other means. Does the applicant have any other way of achieving the benefit, which is to? Does the applicant have any other way of achieving uh, the benefit which is to um. Screen, provide screening. Um, between the porch in the backyard and the neighboring property. John, you've already talked about that. Do you wanna? Um, do you have anything just more to say about it?
I, I, I don't see uh, any other options if that's what they're uh, seeking, uh, you know, for screening purposes, which, you know, neighbors sometimes do, but. And typically, eh, this board has said, well, plantings should be the option if, if anything greater than four feet in height is sought. Uh, so I, I don't think in this case there's an option from, from the discussion had between the applicant. And the evidence, uh, the applicant put forward with regards to the rock shelf.
Laura?
Um, well, maybe just to add to that also because of the topography. That indicates that a four foot fence um, doesn't uh, kind of meet the need. And it needs to be higher. Can I just do a ti- sort of timeout? Heath, do you know, do you have this list of um. Of the balancing factors in front of you or um. Do you want us to put it in the chat so you can see them?
I'm documenting it as we go. So I appreciate.
Have them and I'm happy, I, as an, as the um, recently knew, if it's helpful. That is from. That, that, that's basically the text that we're following.
Thank you.
And it's, it comes from statute, it's statutory law, it comes from the New York legislature, actually wrote these things out.
Find it in the booklet that I mentioned to you, the New York State Guide to ZBAs. That gives a, a list, it, it reprints the text of the list of the factors.
I think that's where, that's where mine is from.
Yeah, thank you. I, uh, thank you, Lauren. Eric, I, I made note of it. I just actually don't have it in front of me right now, so this is.
It takes a little while.
So, and Keith, do you have any um, comments on the, the, whether the, the applicant?
On the other means of screening? No.
Our next, um, will there be an undesirable change in neighborhood character or a detriment to nearby properties? Uh, Heath, why don't you start?
I somehow moved you guys off screen. Um. I have nothing to add there.
Laura?
Um, I'll make a couple of points. Um. It is not visible from the road. Um, and uh, the neighboring property owner submitted a letter in support of the project and, and felt like it would be a benefit to his property.
Well, I walked by there um, eh, this month, uh, when the leaves were down and um. You can see the site a little bit from the road, just a sliver of it. So just for, I think that. Um, the, the, the amount you can see is, is really minimal. It's, it's just um, hardly. Um, a factor, but just for precision, I think there is visibility. Uh, but I wouldn't, I, it doesn't rise to the level of um, of being a strong argument against, so um. Therefore, my comment on this factor is no, um, there is no undesirable change. In fact, up to the contrary, there is a benefit. And like I said, with fences, this is one of the rare case where instead of weighing. Ben, applicants benefit against public harm, we're weighing, we're, we're finding ourselves with two benefits. And um, that makes the decision quite, um, you know, quite a lot easier. Uh, John?
Yeah, I, I think that the way eh, the question is phrased though, uh, it refers to impact on the, the neighborhood and everything, and I'm not necessary. So it doesn't really look to the benefit uh, to the uh, applicant. And I feel that, you know, there is an impact, uh, you know, I, I agree with you, Eric, that it's set far enough off the street that I'm more comfortable with it, but. You know, there is a degree of light that comes through that area, uh, you know, especially in the afternoon with the sun setting in that area. And you know, more of a flow, eh, you just get more general light, uh, so this will be blocking out light. So I, you know, when you look at the community, I, you know, I, I believe there's an impact. I, I'm not, it, I don't think it's a great impact, but it's an impact. So. That's my, that's my opinion.
Next, um, whether the request is substantial. Laura?
Um. Can I let someone, I, um, I, I think I'm rusty on the, the weighing of, or at least it's that, um, I think. Um. I'm curious how we, how we cover a fence request in terms of substantial.
Right, so I mean technically you would calculate, um, you know. Four feet is the requirement, they're asking for an additional two feet, so it's a fifty, right, fu- plus fifty percent. I'm not very good on that, but I think, uh, you know, you're allowed four, they're asking for six extra two feet. So. But when you look at the, whether it's substantial, you can't just look at the calculation itself. There's actually a lot of case law on it, might even be in the statute itself is you, you can't just focus on the number. Yes, the number may be fifty percent. But when you factor in. When you look at the other factors, like the fact that it has a minimal um, detriment to the community, or maybe it doesn't have many environmental impacts. You know, that kind of mitigates the substantiality of it. So you can essentially. You can approve a variance that is fifty percent more than what you're allowed. If it's consistent with the community character, where in other cases, depending on the, the variance request, you could, eh, eh, it could be just a ten percent. And you could find that it is so substant, it's so outside of community character that you would deny it. So. Um, yes, there's a qualitative number that you are calculating and you're looking at. But i- it's certainly not the end all to end all. And really, if the bottom line is if it's. If there's no substantial community character impacts, then it kind of negates the substantiality of it.
That's really helpful. Thanks. Um, well, so it's a fifty percent. Um. Uh, increase in um, the, the variance would be to, to increase the fence by, by fifty percent. Um, which is, uh, which is substantial. And then I think the balancing comes. Uh, with the other factors.
Right. But you know, another thing to look at, it, it's only two feet more. So even though it's fifty percent, you know, it's not like it's fifty percent where it was, you know, going from twenty to thirty, it's just going from four to, four to six. Um, so that's also another part of the calculation, I guess. Yes, it's fifty percent, but it's only two feet. At the end of the day. Is somebody walking down the street really gonna know the difference between a four foot fence or, and a six foot fence? Especially in this case, in this particular unique situation, it's just setback so far. And you've got the topo a- and the existing vegetation.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I, I, I think it's cleaner, just to say that that's substantial. Um, because I do think, I mean, as a five foot, three person, like the difference between a four foot and a six foot is like actually substantial. I can see over it or I can't and um. Uh, and, and at that point, it doesn't make, you know, I can't see it ever, it could be ten feet, not that much of a difference to me. Um, so. Eh, and I think that, that, that important balancing comes in, in the other ones. So I would prefer just. From my stance, I would say that that's fifty percent is substantial.
John, Martin?
Yeah, I agree with Laura. I, I think it's substantial. Uh. And uh, eh, especially as it's between two residences and not necessarily between uh, two, uh, a residence and a, a business. That's doing business with nuisances on the other side. So. I think it's substantial and we'll get to the other stuff later, uh, you know, eh, as John first had mentioned, you know, there's some mitigating things with regards to how far away it is so that it, you know. But the question of the height. And whether eh, eh, you're asking about the variance and Laura, I think said. Properly, you know, stay clean and accurate with it. It's substantial.
My view is that um, I always break this, this factor down into two parts. Um, it's. This request is substantial numerically, but not substantial in effect, in its effect. So um, I always, I, I usually, and that's, so I often end up with that kind of split opinion. Um, and I think the effect um, is more important than, than, than if, if they differ. The effect is more important than the, than the numeric value. So um, I've come down on the side and saying it's not substantial. Uh, Heath? With. Would you call the request substantial?
Your, your point, Eric, actually helps me as, as I was listening to the discussion and, and. The height being substantial, I'm, I'm thinking about the eight percent that was discussed earlier. Um, and I would say based on the effect, when I, when I, with that consideration, I would say, no, it's not.
All right, um, next, um. Will the request have adverse physical or environmental effects? Uh, Heath, would you like to go first?
You, you know, you, you wouldn't think I'd pause that long in saying whether or not I'd like to go first. I'd actually prefer to hear the, the discussion before I go.
John, John Martin?
Uh, the impacts, environmental, or I, I, I think. There will be some impacts uh, to the extent of. Light, notness, no- nothing in the way of erosion, or I, I believe that airflow is not gonna be impacted. Uh, because it's a slatted uh, fence. Um. And um. I mean, it's six feet, but you know, it's, it's only covering a portion of the northern property line. Uh, so I, I haven't heard and I can't think of any environmental impacts other than. Minor airflow issues, very minor and, and more, and more just light. Because you have that big guest house that runs seventy feet from Market Street, then you have that fence. So if you've been by the northern property owner's property, it'll tend to darken things a little bit more in that area. So I, you know, if that can be deemed an environmental, it has some kind of a light, environmental is light, I imagine, as well as anything else, but that's it. So I think it has.
Um, I agree with John's points. Um, I think one benefit is that because it doesn't. Completely cover the property line, there can still be flow of. You know, it's right by the water, animals can still pass from property to property. It, it's not making. That kind of environmental kind of bound restriction.
Um, I, I would answer no to this. Um. Any, any physical or environmental effects are too minor to be um, to, to be a factor. So now we come back to you, Heath.
Thank you. I, I'll also answer no, and that's, as I, as I. Took pause and listened, uh, the rationale also becomes clear for me that it's no, because if there was a factor here, I would be giving pause. In um, the vote for.
What about the um, the large size of both these lots? You know, you're not, they're not the traditional village lots, you know, that we've been talking about the light and air issues. And I, I think the, the deal with fences and based upon my history and my experience. Is the idea is you don't want to create this kind of fortress kind of effect a- around a house. In a neighboring house, this, especially so when you have these small postage style lots that you probably see in the upper part of the village. I, I, I think, and I, I don't know, I'm just throwing this out for you guys, because this was something, I, if I have to draft a decision, is the fact that these, both these properties are so big. And the houses are so spread out that it kind of minimizes any light and air issues.
Definitely. You know, it's true that the two properties are big, but the guest house is right on the border of uh, the neighboring property. And it takes up the first seventy feet running along that driveway for the neighbor.
Right, but the neighbor's house is, there's like two structures, there's a garage, a couple of garages, right? And then the neighbor house is on the other side of the parking lot.
Yeah, but it's not that far off. I think the front door of the neighbor's house is, it, to me, from looking, having looked at it, was probably only about thirty feet at the most. I might be wrong, but I think there's only that space gap between that and where the fence would be, but the neighbor. You know, has not disapproved, but I still.
But I think most village lots, you know, you're not gonna have thirty feet from, from a house to. To property line, so.
I mean, eh, your, your point is taken. I'm, I'm not saying.
And I was trying to create like the uniqueness, you know.
Right, yeah.
Eh, this is unique because you've got two large lots and the houses are. More spread out than tip, what's typically in the village.
That, that, that's accurate, yes.
Right.
And the fences that are on, that are already on the existing property are so far away from each other. That it's not creating that kind of box.
Right.
Box feeling.
Last factor is whether the alleged difficulty is self-created. And, and self-created um, here, um. Heath is a kind of term of art that doesn't mean did the applicant create the problem actively, but rather. Is it something that um, the applicant knew about? At the time of acquiring the property, that would, that creates a condition of self-creation. Um, or, or should have known, so um. I'll start, I'll start this one and I'll say that um, it was self-created because precisely for that reason, I just said it was um, in existence. Um, and um, so the, and so the applicant um. Was aware that of, of the condition that is, of, that is, this proposal seeks to mitigate. Um, Laura?
Um. I, I, I think on a simpler. I, I'm pausing because of the confusion that we just resolved um. Uh, with the interpretation of the code. Um. Uh, but I think on, I just sort of on its face, the I, the idea of it self-created, they. Didn't have, they could have built a fence that was four feet and not asked for a variance, and they've decided um, to ask for a variance, and then that way it's. Uh, it's self-created. I, I'm. Yeah, I guess I'm a little bit unsure just because of the, the kind of history of this, um, of this particular request.
I can tell you that ninety percent of variance requests are self-created. There's. I rep, I've been representing the town of Walk Hill zoning board for five years, and there was only one case we came across. Where it was, wasn't self-created because the, it was, there was a private road in the shopping center. The, the building was right on top of the private road, then the town, a couple of years later, came in. And took over the private road and was dedicated to the town, so that way the property line was right next to the building. And they needed a variance to do something for the setback. And it was, the reason was because the town came in and created a town road. That's honestly the only instance I've ever come across. Um, where the, the hardship was not self-created, but under the statute and, and that, the, it's. It's explicitly stated in the statute that for an area variance, the fact that the hardship is self-created does not preclude. The applicant from obtaining the variance. So yes, it's self-created, but. We've got these other four factors um. That, you know, can outweigh the fact that it's self-created. And like I said, ninety percent of. All variances, probably even more, quite honestly, are all self-created. All variances, probably even more, quite honestly, are all self-created.
Right, and and since most area variance requests are self-created. A finding of yes for this factor weighs only weakly against. Against the application, it only carries a minor, in my view, it only carries a minor weight against the application. John Martin, anything to add?
Yeah, including sitting on this board, it's self-created. Yeah, what else would we be doing, what sporting events on tonight, but anyway, I agree with you, Eric, what you you said, and you know, John first and. You know, Laura, you bring up a good point about how it's. A little bit more uncertain with this particular application because of some uncertainty, but. Just go right to the point, it's self-created because the, they purchased the property knowing how the layout was and. And then you're deemed to know what the code says, and I think the code for us to interpret it, there really wasn't. To me, any ambiguity, and it's all rational. With regards of how it should have interpreted, and everybody's supposed to, they're deemed to know the code even if they don't know the code. That's the way that those are the rules, and and Eric, you know, pointed out all the reasons why. We came with the interpretation that we did, and it's very logical, anyway, so it's self-created.
Heath, anything else?
I appreciate the conversation and I concur, it's self-created.
Okay. Looking back at the at the comments.
So Eric, if I can say here, I know exactly what you can do, but I think we should put it on the record that we're doing a balancing at this point of all the criteria. Because that's what, that's what the courts require, so we should just reference.
Right, and I'm looking at. Which way each one fell? And number one, is there any other means, majority, in fact unanimously felt. There wasn't undesirable change. Majority felt no, and no undesirable change, except John Martin commented a minor effect of light being blocked. So tho- those first two factors weigh in favor of the application, number three. Whether the request is substantial, we had kind of a split vote there, two said yes and two said no. So that's a toss-up, number four, physical or environmental. Two, we kind of had a faint inclination toward a slight. A slight impact, although it mitigated by the short length of the fence. And then two other board members said no, and on self-created, which is, like I said, the least, least significant of the factors. The answer was yes, so on balance, we have three of the five factors are. Way in favor of the application. And two of them against it, although one of those is is the least significant one. So on the, on the basis of that discussion, I'm going to make a motion that we approve the application. Would anyone like to?
You, if, just sorry to interrupt, do you want to add a condition that the color of the fence should be an earth tone?
That's what I was just going to recommend, thank you, John.
Well. Are you saying that would it be binding, or are you saying it's just a recommendation that we, are we empowered to?
You can make a condition that it's earth toned, so that way you give them a little leeway as far as, you know, what. What shade brown, I guess, or, you know, grayish, brownish. You know, I don't, we don't want to go into color swatches or anything like that.
I'm of two minds about that. I mean, any, any requirement would would be, I mean, the fence could be painted, repainted a year later. So would we be requiring that in perpetuity, the fence be maintained a certain color?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. So that way it's not like bright red or pink.
I I see the, I mean, if I were living nearby, I would certainly rather have a earth tone fence. But even the HDRB, it does not mandate color.
I mean, their perspective is historical, sort of reflecting historical character, ours is. Consideration about community character and environmental impact and other ones where. And and we could have actually made that point. For the second. You know. One of the reasons that it's hard to notice from the road, even if it's there a tiny bit, is because the color blends in, right, and if it were neon yellow. You'd be able to see it better, so I think that, that the the color seems to be part of, part of it. Having less of a visual. Impact.
I know I'm not supposed to speak, I just wanted to make one factual statement really quick. In the, in the materials that we gave, we did give a sample of an existing fence that we're going to match. So if you want to say that, I'm just throwing that out there as a sort of clean. Basis for what you're asking, or what John suggested.
Well, what what is the color in that fence?
That was, Paul, if you want to be more.
Can you bring it on the screen? Yeah, thank you.
It's a, it's a brown. You can't let me tell you what color swaps are, because that's not going to go, John, not John Martin, John first. Paul, can you describe that color?
Color, I have to say, is one of my weakest things. I I I see the color and I think of it as a darkish gray. So I, but it's definitely closer to an earth tone or to, like if you see the tree behind it, to the tree bark. Then it is a bright red, they're not, they're not going to paint it a bright red.
So what we could do is you can just, the condition can just essentially see, we can like attach this. To the resolution and the condition can kind of say, you know, of an earth tone color substantially similar. To the photo attached.
By the applicant, yeah.
Paul, does that make sense?
Yes, thank you.
That way they're not locked into a specific color, and they've got a little wiggle room, but they got an idea of what they need to kind of get close to.
Great, thank you, I apologize for interrupting.
No. I'm, I'm, I'm not. I'm not enthusiastic about the idea, I find the idea confusing because. Someone can, as of right, can put a four-foot fence right along the front of their property, right on the street. Where it's smacking everybody's face and painted any color they want, and they don't have to get anybody's permission, so it seems a little. A little dictatorial for us, even though it makes sense, and I would. I applaud the choice that they made, I find it's a little. Excessive for us to be stepping in in such a micromanaging way. It's one particular case.
I I think the idea is, it's kind of a give and take, so they're, they're, they're asking you guys, they're asking this board for relief. From the zoning code, and you're saying, all right, we'll grant you this relief, but. You know, make it this color, so that way, and you know, when people are looking at a six-foot fence. They're not really going to see it as much, so yes, you don't have the ability to control the color of a four-foot fence, but those are permitted as of right. The idea is again to minimize the impacts to the surrounding neighborhood, so a a bright pink four-foot fence. May not have as much of an impact as a bright pink six-foot fence. So it's, it's kind of like a give and take that happens all the time, and I don't, it doesn't sound like the applicant's objecting, and I think it's reasonable and rational. And it's legal, so. You know, but it's your decision, if you don't feel like micromanaging it. You know, it'd really be on the building inspector to follow up with that condition.
I I completely agree with the council's statement on it, with the fact that it's going to be six feet, not four feet, and and it, and again. There's give and take here, no doubt, no doubt that's the case, and I think we should also. Keep part of the condition in there, that it's a fence that, in future, if it ever falls down and the neighbor wants to reconstruct it, they don't just put up. A stockade-type fence, I think it should, I think it should follow, because again, the variance runs with the property. So I think it should follow the requirements of the HRDB with regards to the slatted effect of the fence.
So you're saying the fence should be maintained, if ever replaced, the fence should. Be substantially the same construction style or same design style?
Yeah, design and construction, correct, I agree, I mean. I mean, that's what's been asked, the fence could fall down and people just can run in and say, well, this is already, and they'll put in a different fence. They'll say, well, it's still six feet.
Well, I think you could certainly add that as a condition, but I imagine the HDRB's approval probably has. They controlled the design of the fence, correct? So the only thing they don't, they don't think they have jurisdiction over is the color, but we can certainly add that it should be substantially. The same design as that, as that approved by the HDRB.
Okay. Laura, do you, what do you think about these two requirements?
I agree with the, I agree with the color. The, and then the design, you know, I also agree that that was part of our justification of limited impact. With airflow, but. If it's covered by HDRB, then. Then it's not necessary, but I, I mean, I I agree with both, both concepts.
I think it makes sense that this is a discussion because of the way we. We we fell split with the substantial part of the conversation.
Okay. Yeah, all right, then, majority rules, so. We will add to the. Resolution, the requirement that in perpetuity, the fence. Be painted a. Earth tone color, essentially the same as what appears in the application, and that if if the fence is ever reconstructed. That substantially the same design style be used. So I'll amend my motion by adding that requirement. And. Would anyone like to second the motion to approve?
A second.
All in favor? The motion passes unanimously. So.
Okay, Eric, so do you want me to draft? The resolution for the interpretation and the area variance?
I don't mind doing it myself, Aaron Wolf used to write the resolutions. So I mean, if if it's appropriate for the chair to write them, I'll be happy to do it, and I could run it by you.
Okay. The one thing, yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, and we'll, we'll all look at it, right, Eric, do you think, we don't necessarily have to give input if, unless we have, see something out of place, that's all.
All right, definitely, I will circulate it, yeah. Okay, well, that is it for the, for this application, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you all for your time. For the attention you gave to our fence, we very much appreciate it.
Have a good night.
Thanks.
John first, I don't know that we need you to stay on anymore, we're just going to go over some very short minutes.
Yep, that's fine, I will take off, have a good night, everybody.
Thanks, John, thanks for.
Happy New Year, stay safe.
Happy New Year.
The only other item was the reviewing the minutes of December seventeen. Which are very short, they just. You should all have a copy, they just mentioned the adjournment of the hearing, and then the approval of the previous minutes.
Yeah, I'm looking for the minutes, Eric, so sorry.
Sure, take a, take a moment.
They're hard to recognize because they're so short, I pulled them up and thought I was looking at the wrong document.
Would have thought with the pandemic, people would be dreaming out more projects.
Yeah, all the new house sales, everything.
My dreams have been stifled lately, actually.
So what, what day did you send these, Eric, is this the, at one, at two o'clock, oh, it says CBA minutes, is that it?
Well, first you received the copy from Michael Mel, I think, and then later.
Have them, thank you very much, I picked them up for sending them. I don't see any problem with them. Thank you, Michael Mel.
I'm here, what is it?
Good minutes, thank you. Happy New Year, too.
I don't see anything.
I had read them earlier and there, it was, there was such brevity that it stuck out that I abstained in it, so. I don't see anything.
Hey Heath, great job today, thanks for, thanks for joining us.
Yeah, thank you.
This was an interesting application because it went across several, you know, different types of levels, so.
It was actually the first interpretation in in anyone, that we've ever been asked for in anyone's memory.
That, that's accurate, that I know of in ten years. Good job, Eric, on that one.
Thank you.
Followed your lead.
Would anyone like to move that we approve the, the minutes without changes?
Go ahead, Heath.
I'd like to. Motion to approve the minutes. Without changes.
Just in case there's a mistake in them.
All in favor, say hi. The minutes are unanimously approved, that's the last business on the agenda, does anyone have new business to raise? I'm not, by the way, I'm not aware of any new candidates for our open seat. So we continue to be, to welcome. Applications.
Yeah, I've been looking around, I I haven't got, I haven't convinced anybody yet, but. It would, it would help us all as a board, so that, you know, if ever one of us can't make it. It just makes it easier, you know, because there'll be times when all of, you know, each one of us can't make it, so.
Yeah, does the village ever put an ad in the paper? I mean, I often see that in other, in other towns.
They did it for the, for the seat on the HDRB recently.
They should do it again, you're right, Grace Lowe once responded to one of those ads.
Yeah. And then it gets outside of the, you know, our network, which, my network is only people who are already committed to other, to other groups, that's how I know them, so.
Good point, Laura, we should do that.
Maybe I'll mention that to today, or try to find out what the. What their policy is on advertising for those seats.
And Laura will say women only need apply, right?
Well, I think, but maybe if he receives multiple applications, it would be, that can be one of the balancing factors.
Right, but we also had alternates in the past, by the way.
Oh, really?
Yeah, we had, at one point, we had, we had an alternate, we had five and a member, so.
Those are the days of plenty.
Yeah. That's when things were easy. Eric, thanks for all your work on this, appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you, Eric.
So if there's no further business, I move that we close the meeting.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Happy New Year, everybody.
All right.